Regular meeting of the City Council will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Skadim?
Here.
Joseph Camaro?
Here.
Stephen Camaro?
Kilby?
Yep.
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Here.
Vice President La Libbidi-Labo? Here. Will everyone in the council please rise for a moment in silent prayer? Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Several people signed up for citizens input. The first is Louis Frias, 96 Stevens Street. Subject is gas station. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Frias. I like to stand up, is that okay?
If you want to grab the microphone, because it's hard to hear.
Oh, okay, all right, then I'll sit down. All right. My name is Louis Frias. I live on Stevens Street, and I'm here today because of what's going on on the corner of Stevens Street and Brayton Avenue. They're gonna make a gas station in there, and everybody is upset about it. First of all, is, gas is always gas. We are afraid of that. And then the traffic. It's gonna be a lot of traffic over there. It already is. We already have swamp, that it's got 400 employees in there. We have the school on Jefferson Street. Half of that traffic goes on Stevens Street also. We have a project halfway on Stevens Street. We got kids going on the street and everything. So that area there, it's already a lot of traffic, and we don't want anymore. You know, if you put a gas station in there, you got the gas itself leaks and all of that stuff. It's so dangerous. And plus, the chemicals for the washer, the car wash that they're gonna build over there also. So, that's another concern. And we have a pond on the back, like 200, 200, 300 feet away from the location. There's a big pond, so that's another concern. So, we're not happy at all. We're not happy at all. We're wondering if there's anything you guys can do to alleviate this. If they want a gas station, they have one across the street, across the avenue. That was from Sam's Club, right near McDonald's. They can use that. But another one in there, I don't think it's a good idea. I have just few with me, which is a few people here, which is the people that we've been around and asking for signatures and all that. We didn't want to bring everybody here, because everybody wanted to come. We're talking about about 50 people. That it's not certified with it, so.
Counselor in seat one?
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam President.
I'm sorry, Counselor in seat one. Counselor in seat one.
You're looking at me, that's all right.
Madam Vice President, through you to the clerk. Can we just verify with planning if there was a review on this for that property, and if there was any traffic studies as part of the site plan review?
Sure.
And if we can just forward that to the council?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I yield.
Counselor in seat four?
Same question. I yield.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you. Could you make sure that the clerk has your phone number before you leave?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Lucia Almeida, 63 Small Street. Subject is Accepted Street.
Good evening. I'm here because I've been living on Small Street. I'm Lucia Almeida. I live on Small Street. I've been living there for six, 20 years. They never did anything for that street, not even pothole, never fulfilled anything. And I already tried to get it, you know, worked on it, tried, and I was told that the street was not accepted. And I'm here because I already filed the petition with 16 signatures. So I'm here to make sure to not let this go for too long, because that street is a mess. No sidewalks. It's only four houses on the street. No sidewalks, no drainage, because when it rains, my driveway and my yard, it looks like a pound. And there's no fire hydrants. I don't know. I don't know if there's a fire, I don't know when they're gonna get the water. And that's it. I already showed some pictures to some of the gentlemen. I sent on Facebook my pictures to Joe Camaro and Steve Camaro. So, I don't need, I just need two people to look at the pictures, because I already sent, "Please open my message." And I think I deserve a better street, because I paid $4,000 in taxes. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a minute, just a minute, Ms. Salina. This is item 16 on our agenda, but some counselors have some questions. Counselor in seat four?
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, we spoke earlier, and I agree with you. You do need some relief, for sure.
Yes, please.
As Madam Vice President said, it is item 16, so it's on for our vote and our action tonight, so I can assure you, you're gonna get some relief very soon.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you coming in after a long day to speak with us.
And the construction, when they opened the gas, the ditches for the gas pipes, they made it worse.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor in seat three?
No, that's fine. I just wanted to be sure. That's all right. That's fine. I just wanted to be sure that you went through the process and get it on as an Accepted Street.
I did, I did. But I'm here just to...
We should be able to move it forward. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Oh, one more. Counselor in seat one?
She can leave. So I'll be supporting whatever...
I'm on TV.
You're all set. I'll be supporting whatever she needs us to do to move that forward, but I do, and when we were having a conversation, I went to the pavement management report, and I kind of spoke to a couple of my colleagues and Mrs. Sahadi. But I also noticed that there are some other streets, particularly off of Brayton Ave, like when you start going to Smith Street, Baker Street. Those roadways are not accepted from Brayton Ave to either Grinnell or Cambridge Street, which is kind of concerning, because I think those are roads that are heavily traveled, especially when we start looking at the green school traffic. And then I started noticing that we have a lot of roadways that I think that we would think or anticipate would be, have been accepted. One of my concerns is, number one, that they're not accepted. Number two, they're not part of our formula for Chapter 90s for some additional roadway improvement. So I know while those sections are rather small, I think it's important. So what I'd like to do is put a resolution, maybe if we can do it for an item after the agenda, and then just get that referred to Public Works, so that they can have a conversation with the town engineer, and start talking about some of the streets that we think should be accepted, so that we can have a game plan moving forward.
You're gonna write that resolution, Counselor?
Sure. I'd love to.
You yield?
I yield.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Final resident to speak is Danny Robalard, 145 Old Second Street, and the subject is Charter.
President Pam LeBeau, members of the council, Dan Robalard, 145 Old Second Street. The federal court gave the residents of Fall River, the nearly 2,400-plus residents that voted at the ballot box to oppose the Fall River City Charter and its flawed state of victory, also giving a victory to school committee member Joshua Hetzler in its determination that he could run and serve if elected, because the provision of the charter said that because he's a public employee, he would be disqualified from serving. I had the privilege and honor of being an elected member of the Charter Commission. I voted against this provision, because I felt it was completely discriminatory. I felt that you could not eliminate one group or class of people who would otherwise be eligible to vote and qualified to serve in public office from serving solely based on the position and job that they hold. So I believe the federal court got it right. I congratulate the judge. I congratulate Mr. Hetzler in being able to participate in the democratic process, and if he's elected, reelected, that he'll be able to serve. And the judge did democracy right, in my opinion, and supported the nearly 2,400-plus voters who voted against the flawed charter. And it is flawed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. They don't shut off.
You can't shut it off.
Madam Clerk, before we start, could we get a motion to take items eight, nine, and 10 out of order?
Motion made.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Long. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Madam Clerk?
Items eight, excuse me. Items eight, nine, and 10 are citations. We have Peter McCartney, Peter McCarthy, his retirement after 25 years of service to the Boys and Girls Club of Fall River. Anya Karen Costello in recognition of her literary achievement, and Alexandria Catherine Farias in recognition of her outstanding service to the community.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt citations?
Second.
Second motion made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camaro, and I believe that two of them are gonna be presented this evening. Counselor Camaro?
Did we vote already on the...
Yes.
I didn't hear all in favor, all opposed.
May I make a comment on one of the citations?
Sure.
Yes?
Yes.
All in favor?
I said all in favor. All in favor, I still voted.
Although he's not present, I just would be remiss if I didn't congratulate Mr. McCarthy on his retirement and his wonderful tenure. Counselor Long and I were on a vote of directors of the Boys Club a number of years ago, and that institution, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but there's been three executive directors, I think, in the last 100 years or so. And as a child, nine, 10 years old, Steve was working there, and he was just such a fixture, and he helped so many kids along the way in his career. So I would like to send him a message, if he's watching, that congratulations and a long, happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And Mr. Ponti will be presenting that to Mr. McCarthy at some point. Thank you. Counselor Camaro?
Thank you. Today, tonight is Girl Power Night, so I'd like to invite Anya Karen Costello, and also Alexandria Catherine Farias to come up. And I think I'd like to invite their parents, who are here as well, to join them, so although I think one of them, or both of them, are gonna be taking pictures, but come on down here, Anya and Ally. And Adra, can you join us? She's shy, but she'll join us, I think. So, these two young, outstanding Fall River rights, these Fall River young women, have really distinguished themselves in different ways, but both significant ways. So if you could come and just stand behind, and I think Dad is taking some pictures, so we'll excuse you if you need to take some pictures. But first, I'll mention Alexandria Catherine Farias here. And she initiated a dad and daughter project recently. As I was driving up Highland Avenue, traveling north, I noticed this young woman was getting her hands, and feet, by the way, she was wearing flip-flops, I think, which we decided was not OSHA-approved wear for landscaping. But she was beautifying the green there at Highland Avenue, High Street, and Maple Street. Now, this green had previously been planted by her dad, Michael, who is here, who lives just there on the corner of Maple and Highland Avenue, and it needed some attention. And fortunately, Ally recognized that it needed attention, and she convinced her dad that they ought to get the tools out of the shed and get there to the green and make it a more beautiful green. So, it is, and she has gone beyond that, because now, as a student at Antioch, I believe, right, she is now initiating a project for the entire school, with the assistance of Mike Farias, to beautify that green, and in the spring do a serious planting of that beautiful Olmsted green, to make it a beautiful sight as people are traveling into the Highlands. So, that's Alexandria's success. Now, I don't know if you've ever met Anya. Have you ever met Anya? You're 13? Yes, and you're...
11.
11. So here we have a 13-year-old and an 11-year-old. Now, I've known Michael and his wife, and by the way, Dawn is here. Thanks, Dawn. And I have even a closer relationship with Anya, because she is the granddaughter of my first cousin and godfather, John Ponce, and Pauline Ponce. Many of you in the listening audience and people here may know that John was the principal of the DeValle School, beloved by this community for all the good work that he did, and his wife, Pauline, also was an educator in the school system. So I'm sure they're looking proudly down on their granddaughter today, but Anya likes to write. She also likes to do a lot of other things. She's an accomplished musician, she's a great athlete, and she's an award-winning author, not of a short story or a poem, but of a novel. And she competed internationally in writing this novel, I think called Dark Shadows. And she likes to create in her work sort of a touch with fantasy. Well, she competed internationally, and her novel was selected as the novel to be published. She and Dad and Mom, are you all going to Germany at the end of the month? They're all going to Germany where her novel will be unveiled and ultimately will be published. So this accomplishment is incredible. When you think of all the young people in the world that competed in this, and it was a Fall River girl, my third cousin, something like that, who achieved this, and I think she's got Georgie, she's got my Aunt Georgie's beautiful smile, so I'm so happy to see that. So, we have citations for both of you, and we credit the girls with having great parents who stand behind them here, and Uncle John Ponce is in the audience, my cousin John Ponce's son, who's also an educator. And so the first one I open is for Anya, and it reads, "Be it resolved that the City Council hereby extends its commendation to Anya Karen Costello in recognition of authoring at the age of 13 a full-length novel that was chosen as the winner of an international novel-writing contest sponsored by Stone Soup Literary Magazine and Mackenzie Press. Be it further resolved that the Fall River City Council extends best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be entered in the records of the City Council adopted this evening, presented by me, Stephen Camaro, as a member of the council, signed by our council president, acting president Pam La Libbidi-Labo, and also attested to by our city clerk, Allison Bouchard." So congratulations, Anya. And we're not gonna let you go yet, okay? And this one, "Be it resolved that the City Council hereby extends its commendation to Alexandria Catherine Farias in recognition of her initiating a dad and daughter project to clean up and beautify the triangular green at Highland Avenue, High Street, and Maple Street. Be it further resolved that the council extends best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be entered in the records of the City Council, again adopted tonight, proposed by me, Stephen Camaro, signed by our acting president, Pam La Libbidi-Labo, and attested to by Allison Bouchard, our clerk." Congratulations, Ally. So I'm gonna have them give greetings to the rest of the council, and the council president and president. So if you do good, just go down the aisle, everyone will shake a hand, and thank you for being here.
And I'd also ask, since Ms. Salina is here, if we could take item 16 out of order? So, motion made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Madam Clerk?
Item 16 is a request that the City Council hereby recommends the engineer prepare plans for the acceptance of Small Street extending from President Avenue to a dead end.
Motion to adopt? Second?
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Joseph Camaro.
Motion to refer to planning.
This would need to go to the planning board first.
Motion to refer to planning board by Counselor Joe Camaro, seconded by Counselor Long. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item number two on the council agenda is a communication from the mayor in an order to accept a gift of a piano from Ms. Nancy Dempsey for the Flint Senior Center.
Motion to accept? Motion at table?
Motion at table takes precedence. Do you have a second, Counselor Long? Any discussion?
No discussion.
I'm sorry, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item number three is a communication from the City Council Vice President regarding a request sent by the Cannabis Control Commission to Corporation Council to recertify Fall River applicants.
I think appropriate might be to invite Corporation Council. Motion, we have the rules, to invite Corporation Council down to the table?
Seconded.
By Counselor Skadim, seconded by...
Seconded.
Counselor Long. All in favor?
Aye.
I had put this resolution in as a result of getting a copy of the letter the Cannabis Control Commission sent on the 19th of September, asking the city through its law department to recertify all of the applications. I had a brief conversation with you about that, and I guess what we wanted to know, what I wanted to know, is what that process to recertify would be if you were going to do that.
Well, let me answer that question, and then if there are other questions, or I'll be glad to answer them. Essentially, there is no recertification process. Never heard of it, and nobody else has either. So I intend to compose a letter to the commission telling them why I won't recertify anything. There is no provision in the statute for recertification. There's certainly no provision in the statute for the Corporation Council of any city or the town solicitor to do such a certification. And the certification they're looking for goes well beyond the usual initial certification that we've been granting as a matter of course. They have requested a determination whether each Fall River applicant is in compliance with all local permits, rules, regulations, and ordinances. And I'm not about to recertify that for a number of reasons. One, I don't know. We have a regulation that I think is gonna go into effect on Friday, regulating the display, sale of cannabis products. I know you were looking into that this afternoon, Council Vice President, and there seemed to be some problems with that. We have legislation proposed by a state representative from New Bedford suggesting a moratorium. We have our own local delegation who have written to the state people, and without belaboring the obvious, we have a federal investigation that is either concluded or ongoing. So the answer to the question is, I'm not gonna recertify anything.
Counselor in seat four?
I know you did say there's no provision for recertification, but I was under the impression that would be up to the state anyway. It wouldn't be... I was under the impression that the recertification would occur with the state people work, not necessarily the city, because, correct me if I'm wrong, the city issues their letter of non-opposition.
The way the process is supposed to work is somebody applies to a community for permission. That community, wherever it is, gives a letter of non-opposition, enters into a whole community. I had put this resolution in as a result of getting a copy of the letter the Cannabis Control Commission sent on the 19th of September, asking the city through its law department to recertify all of the applications. I had a brief conversation with you about that, and I guess what we wanted to know, what I wanted to know is what that process to recertify would be if you were going to do that.
Well, let me answer that question, and then if there are other questions, or I'll be glad to answer them. Essentially, there is no recertification process. Never heard of it, and nobody else has either. So I intend to compose a letter to the commission telling them why I won't recertify anything. There is no provision in the statute for recertification. There's certainly no provision in the statute for the Corporation Council of any city or the town solicitor to do such a certification. And the certification they're looking for goes well beyond the usual initial certification that we've been granting as a matter of course. They have requested a determination whether each Fall River applicant is in compliance with all local permits, rules, regulations, and ordinances. And I'm not about to recertify that for a number of reasons. One, I don't know. We have a regulation that I think is going to go into effect on Friday regulating the display, sale of cannabis products. I know you were looking into that this afternoon, Council Vice President, and there seem to be some problems with that. We have legislation proposed by a state representative from New Bedford suggesting a moratorium. We have our own local delegation who have written to the state people, and without belaboring the obvious, we have a federal investigation that is either concluded or ongoing. So the answer to the question is, I'm not going to recertify anything.
Counselor in seat four.
I know you did say there's no provision for recertification, but I was under the impression that would be up to the state anyway. It wouldn't be, I was under the impression that the recertification would occur with the state people work, not necessarily the city, because, correct me if I'm wrong, the city issues their letter of non-opposition.
The way the process is supposed to work is somebody applies to a community for permission. That community, wherever it is, gives a letter of non-opposition, enters into a host community agreement, forwards that to the Cannabis Control Commission, and then they go through all the processes that they have to ultimately determine whether they issue a license or they don't. You recall that when the ordinance limiting the number of licenses here was before us, I mentioned to the council that I didn't think you had the power to limit licenses, although you could do other things. So I really, I want to be careful what I say, but I really don't understand what they're doing. It seems to me, quite frankly, that's their job. They have investigators, they have lawyers. I've spoken to them on a number of times on other subjects. So I may be able to understand why they want us to recertify, but I'm not about to do it.
No, I follow your line of thinking. I might think we all understand the mess that we're under here, but the certification process doesn't lie with you and your office. Final certification lies with the state. So I'm in agreement with your position that, you know, at this point in time, it's, you know, it's up to the state to take action.
I agree.
And maybe just request that we, whatever, scrap the licenses we've given so far and start over, but save.
Well, I think what, now we're really on a slippery slope, because not only did the council write me a letter, not only has the legislators weighed in, not only has the Cannabis Control Commission weighed in, but of course, a number of these people who have either applied for licenses, received licenses, or are in the process, have had their lawyers call me and say, gee, you know, what are you going to do? And I told them what I told you, I'm not going to do anything.
Well, I agree with your position. It's just too bad the situation we're in. It really is. I yield.
Anything further? Counselor in seat one.
Thank you, Madam President. Just in terms of, you know, the CCC's request, I don't necessarily disagree with you. I think it's well within their purview to come back down and start reviewing and looking at all the applicants that have submitted any type of formal documentation to the Cannabis Control Commission. However, in terms of responding to them, are you planning on drafting a formal written letter to them highlighting?
Yeah, and in accordance with my charge under the ordinances, and so I'm in charge of the legal affairs, yeah, I'm answering the question directly. I will send them a formal response explaining why I don't think it's appropriate, necessary, or that I have the ability to recertify. No, I'm not, I'm not going to just ignore them, but the letter was the 19th. I think I had 14 days. I wanted to come here at your, Pam, Vice President's request to report to you first, but no, I'm not going to ignore them and just.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I guess what, also what I'm just curious is, are we going to outline at least what the initial certification of these licenses or agreements were?
Well, no, they know that. They, I mean, they have it. They wouldn't have any applications there if the initial process hadn't been completed.
So can we get that? I'm just curious, as the parameter, we've been trying to ask for the parameters on how these applicants got certified in terms of business plans, investors, safety plans, quality of?
I think you have about 100 pages of paper that my office delivered yesterday. I actually think that I provided a lot of that previously, but in the Vice President's letter, she asked for a copy of all documents and our correspondence by and between each of the applicants who received community host, community agreements, and the city before, during, and after their approval was received prior to the meeting. It's quite voluminous. We luckily had it all in one place, and I don't know if you each have copies. It's about that thick, but it's available.
Okay. So if there's nobody else that wants to speak, I would suggest that we table this matter just so that we can review that.
We do have one more counselor that would like to speak, two more, three more.
So I'll yield for now.
Counselor, if I can just suggest one thing. Somewhere on the agenda, I believe, is a request to refer one or two ordinances to the ordinance committee. You might want to refer this there, because it's all, it's all part of one piece. We can do it any way you want. I was just going to suggest that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we understand, at least internally from the initial agreements that were submitted to the CCC, how that was done, the planning. So if there's 100 pages or whatever it is, I think we should.
Let me also suggest that, once you review it, the volume is so great that if anybody wants to come into the office and discuss one or two as opposed to spending two hours here discussing every one, that's fine with me.
Okay. I yield.
It wasn't the intent to have them discussed here, but I think I'll leave these, the stack in the counselor's meeting room, and if counselors want to review all of the documents, then that'll be there, so we don't have to make numerous copies, because it is quite large. Counselor in seat seven?
Thank you. I find this situation a very bad situation for the city, and, you know, is it up to us? Pam's got an idea, seat number one, myself, put a cap on it, whatever the case may be. But it seems to me that the CCC themselves should take a stand and say, hey, the ones who gave a bribe, the one who was asked to give a bribe, they're going to seriously consider, I think, not getting their license. And I think the longer they wait to do something, the worse it gets to the city. We have a problem up the Tiverton Line, we know it, and it's a bad situation, accidents, cars all over the place. They got 20, 30, 30 new homes there, and they got trouble getting in and out. So I'm hoping with all the stuff that we sent them and the reps sent them up to the CCC, that they get on their high horse and do something. And what happened with the cannabis thing is, they went too fast. I've said it, you know, if they walked through it a lot slower, I think things would have been better. But now, it's so messed up, it's bad. So what are they going to do? What can we do? I don't think it's up to us. It's up to them in Boston to decide when and how they're going to fix the situation up. It's not only Fall River, it's true out of the state of Massachusetts. You know, some are taking bribes, some are giving cars, fire trucks, whatever they got to do to get the letter of non-opposition. But again, that doesn't mean they're going to get it, the license. But if anybody overstepped the boundaries by giving or even asked to give it and they gave, they should be penalized, as far as I'm concerned. So the sooner they know how we stand in the whole state, they got to move on this. They should move on it. And it's holding everybody up. You know, some guys invested money, you got 14 letters that went out, and I said that before, they gave too many letters out. We obligated to say, hey, you know, you spent 200,000, 300,000, does that mean we have a commitment to them? I don't know. The CCC, what are they going to decide? They put up 200,000, 300,000. So that's a problem we got. That's a problem we got to face, but we got to do it soon, because the whole city is waiting. People get jammed up, like I said, in Tiverton, and something's going to be done. So the extent, as far as you sending letters to Boston or whatever you can do, I mean, you know the right thing to do, but I don't think they know the right thing to do, but do it soon.
Well, I don't say this too often, but I agree with the council. I think it very clearly is in their court, and I will compose a letter telling them that.
And the other thing, you know, they got a problem already, and then you're talking about home deliveries. Oh, come on, let's go it away before we start home deliveries and they're going to wear body armor and guns to go deliver this stuff. It's crazy. First step first. What's that, I yield? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat six, Council Long.
I'm going to have cannabis armored cars going around. No, I think there's, and I agree with my colleagues, it is in the CCC's lap right now, but as far as we're concerned in Fall River, the thing that holds everything up is the status of the criminal charges and what happens there. And that concerns me, and I agree. If somebody did something illegal, then they should pay a price. But the other thing that I'm very concerned with is you have a lot of money that's been invested here, and I will assume at this point that that's legitimate investment, and it's on hold. I know a lot of people have gained employment with these operations, and it's a pretty big operation. A lot of them have started. I know the one in Northeast is expanding, and it seems like every time somebody gets it moving, it just starts to expand, and I don't see that as a bad thing. But until these criminal charges are done, everybody's hands are kind of tied, because they're not going to be giving up evidence or even able to give up anything with regards to the situation that Fall River faces until those things are settled. And it just really throws a monkey wrench into this, and until that's done, I don't think we're going to be able to get anywhere with anything, even with the CCC and everybody else. It just really has put a wet blanket over this emerging industry, this emerging industry. And, you know, I think that's a sad thing. Again, they moved too fast. I don't, I agree with that, but it's the criminal charges that really concern me as to who did what, to whom, and when, and that type of stuff, because until that time, we don't know who's on the right side, who's on the wrong side. So we're kind of stuck, and we can talk all we want as to what should happen, what shouldn't happen, but we really don't know. So, you know, I mean, that's the issue, and I do agree that it's the CCC. We took a simple letter of non-opposition and turned it into this unbelievable quagmire, if you will, because the letter of opposition just said to them, proceed with the licensing piece. They proceeded with the licensing piece, as far as I know. Is that correct? That's right. Yeah, so they proceeded with the licensing. They issued the license. If they didn't do their background, why are we going to, what, to fix their problem? I don't see how we should fix their problem, they should fix our problem. This is a situation we have no control over. You got the U.S. Attorneys down here, you got the CCC down here, you got the state legislature coming down here looking at us. I don't think so. I mean, that's just, that's beyond even my capacity to try and figure that out. Now, we're going to tell the state and the feds and everybody else what we're going to do? Usually, they come down here, tell us what we're going to do, and we have no control over it. Now, does anyone of you guys figure it out? I don't think that that's the way to go, but, you know, it's just a mess, and until the, I truly believe until the criminal charges are filed and finished and brought to a conclusion, we're not going to have any idea as to what went down, how it went down, and all those other pieces. And I don't think anybody can act until that is settled. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat three?
As usual, I think the Corporation Council has given us good advice. There are other items on this agenda that refer to this issue, the suggestion that it all go to Committee on Ordinances and Legislation. Seems to be in appropriate direction, so I would move that this item be referred to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation.
Motion made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Judge, would you make sure that counsel gets a copy of the letter? To make sure the counsel gets a copy of the letter that you drafted to the CCC?
I will. Should be by the end of the week.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item number four is the Board of Election Commissioner's official results of the preliminary election.
Motion accept.
Motion accept and placed on file by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
We have the Traffic Commission making recommendations to the ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Whereas a candlelight vigil was held on Monday, October 7th, at Corrigan Mental Health Center to mark Mental Illness Awareness Week, and whereas mental illness encompasses various mental health conditions, and whereas early detection is key to recovery, now therefore be it resolved that the Fall River City Council proclaims October 6th through October 12th, 2019, to be Mental Illness Awareness Week and encourage all citizens to shine light on mental illness and make a difference.
Motion to adopt, please. Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Whereas the state currently allows for the sole discretion to issue community host agreements with the mayor of a municipality, and whereas the community host agreements issued by Mayor Jezza Lefkere II are now part of a 25-count federal indictment which alleges extortion and bribery in exchange for these agreements, and whereas the Cannabis Control Commission is now investigating all of the applicants tied to the city of Fall River, and whereas substantial revenue in the current and future fiscal budgets depend on the validity of the licenses and that venue is, revenue, excuse me, is now in question, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene to discuss writing and adopting an ordinance that takes the absolute authority away from a sole individual and allows for a thorough review process of all applicants so that trust in the process can be restored, and be it further resolved that the City Council respectfully requests the city planner move forward with the public process of establishing thoughtful zoning regulations related to the growing and selling of medical and recreational marijuana and/or any other service related to the marijuana industry.
Motion to adopt.
Target.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor in seat seven?
I'm still here. You mean, you know, you got all these places already set, three or four up the south end, one here. How can you turn around and do a zoning? I mean, it's kind of late to do that.
Well, it is, Counselor, except for the fact that if some of these don't go through because they were a part of illegal activity around getting their license, and we have a limit of 11, and we only have maybe six of these that go through, we're going to have five more. I would assume that those would be grandfathered in, because they were approved on what was in their application, their location, but anything further, we could have zoning for.
Well, this is the whole thing. You got some up the south end, got some down the north end, got some up to Flint, you got them in the middle of President, Plymouth Avenue. It feels like the whole city's covered already. I don't know, you got to zone it, where you going to put it? Put it at the airport with the dumpsters or something? I don't know, you know?
Well, that's why I asked to send this.
I mean, we can talk about it, I just don't think it's going to work.
That's why I asked.
With that, given my feeling, that's it. I yield, thank you.
That's why I asked to send it to the city planner.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor in seat one?
Madam President, just through you, so I don't necessarily disagree with what my colleague in seat seven is stating in terms of trying to create a zoning district. I think that ship has sailed, and the AG would also rule that we had a certain amount of time prior to it coming in, so we can't do that. But to your point, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're looking at the zoning requirements moving forward on some of these venues that might be taking place, if we want to have different buffers and things of that nature in terms of schools and all of that. But moving forward, everything that is established is obviously grandfathered in, but we would still have to go through a zoning process if we're going to make any changes to the zoning, which is an ordinance. So obviously, we'd have to do that and identify. So I don't think it really negates the fact that we should send this to the plan, because I think it probably do, we should do our due diligence to make sure that we're kind of vetting everything, and if there's any concerns. I know you've got concerns and stated that you've got some parking concerns or traffic concerns with the one that's located over in the south end of the city. So we can kind of try to address some of those concerns for any type of applicants that are coming in for the future. So I think it's a beneficial tool. And then the main part of this resolution is to make sure that there's a second body to provide the oversight in terms of submitting these agreements to the CCC for their licensing process or approval of the license application. So to me, I think that makes sense. I've been saying that that's what we should be doing all along to make sure that we had that type of oversight, so that we didn't have one individual who was not required to have public meetings in a transparent process moving forward. So now that it would be required to have a transparent process and be held in public meetings if this body was. was part of that. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk?
Item number 11, are hearings to be scheduled for November 12.
Does the schedule hearings?
We got a vote? We didn't vote.
On which vote? On the resolution.
Yes, we did. The Counselor asked to speak after the resolution.
He did? I, I thought, I thought you stopped the vote because he asked to speak.
No, we voted, and then he had his hand up.
Point of information from the board. Was there a vote?
This motion was made and seconded, but the vote was not completed.
Motion to adjourn, seconded in discussion. Now is time for the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Item 11, are hearings to be scheduled?
Motion to adopt the, in order of schedule of the hearings.
Motion to adopt and scheduled hearings made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Long. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
The police chief's report on licenses.
Accept.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Stephen Camara, accepted by, seconded by Counselor Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
We have applications for the renewal of auto body shop licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Renewals.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have a number of applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses.
Renewals.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have two licenses for the storage of inflammables. We are requesting that they be discontinued as the storage tanks have been removed.
Motion to discontinue licenses.
Second.
Motion to discontinue made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have a request for the acceptance of Granite Street, and the order would be to recommend that the engine, city engineer prepare plans for its acceptance extending from Purchase Street to Rock Street.
Motion to refer to planning board.
Second.
Motion to refer, Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Any discussion? Counselor Kadim?
Just got a question with regards to Granite Street. It's already paved, and it's not an accepted roadway. Curious, do we know how that happened?
I can confirm it's not an accepted street. I don't know about the baby.
So can we? Motion away of the rules?
Motion away of the rules made by Counselor Kadim, second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Administration?
So as the administration comes down, I just, you know, the optics in this whole situation is Granite Street happens to be off of Purchase Street, which just had streetscapes. That also happens to be the street where Jezza Korea's girlfriend's family has just purchased a building. So people that are not familiar, Granite Street runs from Purchase Street towards Rock Street. We have, and today, we, we had an individual who was trying to get their street paved, and they're being told by the, by, by the city that it's not an accepted roadway. We've had other people come before us. If it's not an accepted roadway, they're not getting any services, they're not paving, and here we are paving Granite Street? I'm a little confused by that.
Mrs. Ferris?
I make a point of information. Just, just in my dealings with this, as I was on the review committee for the Purchase Street streetscapes, and when we were looking at the overall project, I brought up a piece that we were going to be doing that whole street, but that little Granite Street, which I didn't know was an unaccepted street, if we use it, it gets plowed, it's, I thought it was a public street. They had just finished a small area up on the Rock Street where they came into Granite Street, like they usually do, like 10 feet or whatever it is, and they were talking about doing the same thing at the bottom of Granite Street next to the bank and doing the same piece. I said, so you're going to have those two pieces done, and this little stretch, which is probably about 30 feet, maybe, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. I said, we're not going to do that? That's crazy. But I didn't know it was an unaccepted street, so I just want to put that out there, that that was one of my recommendations. I think Counselor in seat three was at that meeting when we talked about it. So I'm not sure if that was the beginning of whatever happened to get the street done. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that that was discussed. It was the one and only meeting, I think, that I went to for the oversight of that Purchase Street streetscape, so.
Counselor in seat one?
And then the other piece to it is now that we've got, so we've got a street that was paved, we've got signs that are saying it's a private road, no parking, people are going to be towed. I just, again, I'm baffled by the process in itself. The optics doesn't look good to begin with. I just guess I'm looking.
Members of the council, I did receive inquiry about this from Madam President and did do some investigation. I do have a memo that was developed by Mr. Frye, the city engineer. I'm happy to read it into the record and could certainly make comments. Copy's available to you. So the reference portion of Granite Street has been taken up by city council. Obviously, it's before you for acceptance. During the course of reconstructing Purchase and Bank Streets during the streetscapes project, the contractor attempted to key into Granite Street where it intersects Purchase Street. So you know Purchase Street was reconstructed, and then Granite comes into it, and they were trying to blend the true roadway surfaces. The pavement and subgrade in Granite Street failed, requiring the contractor to advance outside the approved limits of work to attempt to key into the street. The street structure failed again, and the contractor halted work and waited for direction. So they were attempting to try to blend the two roadways, and Counselor Long is correct that it was in very serious, very bad condition, so they're having difficulty trying to key it in. Upon consultation with Beta, recognizing that the condition and grade of Granite Street would result in accelerated deterioration of the newly paved surface in Purchase Street, I directed the contractor to complete keying in the street and provide a minimal level course to protect the condition of Purchase Street. The paving work was completed on the project on October 6th and 9th of 2018. There was also an issue of drainage in the area. They were concerned that the runoff from Granite was going to undermine the newly paved Purchase Street, and so that was also being addressed by simply top coating and sealing to prohibit water from getting underneath the surface and ultimately causing deterioration of the newly paved area of Purchase Street.
So can I, can I ask?
I'll just finish the amendment.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Counselor. This determination all play, also played a role in the addition of Pine Street to the Chapter 90 contract, as well as Bank Street east of Purchase Street. Both of those roadways were creating similar circumstances, only those were full-depth reconstruction projects as opposed to Granite just simply being an overlay, and Chapter 90 funds were used for that. But again, the policy is also consistent with the extra work executed on private property throughout the project, from tying in driveways, installing granite or monolithic curve along exposed building foundations, and correcting past construction practices which left open voids beneath the sidewalk and along building foundations for coal chutes and other abandoned building access points. Just to add to that, I, I did check further, again, after conversations with Madam President, the transfer in ownership of the townhouse building, as we refer to it, was actually in June of 2019, so the paving had been completed sometime previous. So the, the engineer made the determination that because of the deterioration, the concern about maintaining the integrity of Purchase Street, that they would just do a simple paving overlay. It was not full-depth reconstruction, except closer to Purchase where it was, it was done out of necessities.
Point of information, Mrs. Ferris, one?
Yes.
Is that memo written?
Today, Counselor, in response to the inquiries made regarding, from Madam President.
Then I just have one question. If the city engineer paved what he knows is an unaccepted street, why would it take a city resident 10 months later to have to file a petition to get this in front of the council for it to be accepted?
All right, so actually, the concerns that arose were relative to a parking problem. Counselor in seat one alluded to that on this particular street. Anyone who's familiar with the street knows that it's a very, it's a really narrow roadway, and what was happening was there was an individual that wanted to be able to park on Granite Street and was advised that they could not park on the street, also in fact because it was an unaccepted street, and that consequently, they could receive tickets for parking in an area that was not an accepted roadway. And so the individual in question that had concerns about the parking is actually the individual who initiated the petition to get the roadway accepted so that there could be legal parking along that roadway. And as near as I was able to under, determine, the signs that counsel refers to were actually in, put up by the resident or the, the building owner that's on the corner of Rock and Granite, and it was trying to maintain an open throughway there. And again, anybody's traveled that way, and I've actually done it myself. If there are two cars parked there, it makes it impossible to, to pass onto Rock Street because of the parking problem. So actually, it was the individual who was interested in securing the parking that initiated the acceptance of the roadway.
Just point of information?
Yes.
Who is, who initiated the petition?
City clerk has the exact information, Counselor.
Madam Clerk?
The person's name is Michaela Franco.
And there were, are there 10 signatures?
There were actually 13 that were certified.
Okay. I, I'll, I'll wait until my turn, put my hand up for comment.
Counselor in seat one, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I guess where I was going was, I understand the logic of trying to obviously maintain the investment that was put on Purchase Street and then also over on Rock Street. Again, from my standpoint, we got to talk about fairness and consistency. We've got a number of residents that come before us who live on unaccepted roadways. They come before the city council, and we tell them that there's nothing we can do because it's not accepted. They've got to go through the process of trying to get the roadways accepted. The, the other point, and you kind of alluded to this, is that when we have roadway projects, I mean, we've got, what, I don't know, 29,000 parcels of families, either multifamily homes or single-family homes. When we tie into, when we're doing a street and we're tying into a driveway, we're limited to where we go, right? So if we have a resident coming, because the, if it's not an accepted roadway, it's essentially a private driveway, right? So we're now going to start running into a situation where homeowners are not going to be happy with, and I'm sure we've had issues, instances, where the tie-in from the new pavement job into their driveway, current driveway, is not to the standard that they expect it to be, and then they complain, and claims are put in, and we deny claims. But meanwhile, what we do is we continually pave an entire road from Purchase Street to Rock Street, and we're not doing what we're supposed to do, what we, what we should be doing in terms of tying in properly into driveways, and it's on the homeowner to then fix their driveway and, you know, either feather it in or do whatever they need to do to maintain it, to, to get that even grade into the, into the roads. I know we do as much as we possibly can, but with that being said, again, a, a number of individuals coming to us, I, I think there needs to be a policy, a procedure. I agree with Council President, who, who has stated that, you know, I mean, we've got this done in 2018 and now it's before us for, for an acceptance of the roadways. I for one, again, optics doesn't look good, and I can appreciate people putting up the signs, but if we're going to invest money into it, I, I think those signs should go through and follow the same process that they've always followed, go through ordinance, traffic committee, the traffic committee there to, to start looking at whether or not these signs should be there, because if, if they're not supposed to be parked on them, then I don't know that we should be paving them. That's just, that's just really my point and my, my frustration in this whole thing. So hopefully, with this and, and with the resolution that's going to be filed, we can start looking at all our unaccepted roadways and really start having these conversations moving forward to, to identify the roads that absolutely need to be accepted. And the other piece to this as well, and I've, I've spoken to the state delegation trying to change some of the zoning laws that we, we have and the subdivision laws that are currently on Massachusetts, the Massachusetts general laws that govern that, you know, with sureties and bonding. Because we, we've got developments out there that have been sitting out there for over 10 to 15 years, where houses are, are being built, the developer comes in, files bankruptcy, moves on to another, another development, does the exact same thing, and never completes the subdivisions that they're supposed to be completing. Meanwhile, you go on Detroit Street, you go on other, other streets there, you've got streets that still have not been accepted, that's only have binder courses on there, and people have been living there, paying taxes, and have, have lived there for over 10 to 15 years, and there's no final course on there. So I, I know that's a separate conversation that needs to be addressed, but I, I'm trying to work with the state delegation to really kind of take that initiative to change what's going on in terms of subdivision rules and regulations throughout the Commonwealth, because it's not just an issue here, it's throughout other communities. But I don't think it's fair that we have projects that are being done, roads are not being built to the specs that we've outlined, hence the reason they're not being accepted. We're continuing to plow these subdivisions with our own manpower, with our own revenue coming in. We're picking up, we continue to pick up trash there, and we still have roads that are not built to the specifications that we expect them to be when they are, you know, accepted as, as roadways. So I, I think we've got major issues that we've got to talk about, and it's, this is just one particular issue, but I, I think this council really needs to start delving into some of these issues moving forward. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat two?
Thank you. I couldn't agree more with my colleague in seat one. I actually, just by chance, ran into the petitioner, I believe it was the same person that filed the petition, and she explained to me the situation there. I immediately called Mr. Frye and said to him, what's going on? Why are we getting the street that's not accepted? That letter, I didn't, I haven't seen it yet, but I'll tell you, if he's going to say that the no parking signs belong on one side because it's parking on both sides, it can cause a traffic jam, that doesn't hold any weight with me at all, because first of all, when we paved that street, we should have petitioned to accept it right away. We should have put no parking on one side of the street and put parking meters on the other side of the street. End of story. I hope that's what we're going to do now. We're looking to put parking meters all over the place. Why don't we, why don't we want to have parking meters on that street, accept it when we paved it, and put no parking on the other side, so everyone can use it, there's never going to be a problem with a traffic jam, and we can generate some revenue instead of letting people who own the street, basically because it's not accepted, have the city maintain it, pave it, take care of it, and give them their own little private parking on, on the street. So it's, it's not the right way to go about it.
And just to clarify, Counsel, so the city didn't put up the park, the no parking signs? That was the, okay, just to be sure.
Correct. The individual do it.
Yes, well, there, again, you're correct.
They own it.
But the city didn't. I just want to be clear.
But when the city paved there, we should have taken acceptance of it right away, done it ourselves, put up no parking on one side to alleviate the possibility of people parking on both sides, put meters on the other side. I hope that's what we're going to do now, going forward, because that's the only thing that makes sense. Accept the street, put no parking on one side, put meters on the other side. Now anyone can park there. Not just pave the street, don't accept it, let these people continue to own it, we'll maintain it, and they can park there in the middle of downtown.
Yeah, and it is a safety issue, Counsel.
It is a safety issue, so. And, and it's honestly, I, I'm shocked that he would even write that that's the reason the signs were up to, because we didn't want parking on both sides, so that homeowners had to take their own action. Now they're going to dictate to us where people park on the street that supposedly they own. We could have taken possession of it, we're doing it now. Why we waited for some petitioner to try to find and struggle for a parking spot? She obviously parked there, we told she couldn't do it, and luckily, she said, this isn't right. It's just, it's, it's just ridiculous. There's no other way to say it. It is, how can we pave the street, not take acceptance of it, and let other people dictate who's going to park where because supposedly they own the street? With that, I yield.
A point of information, when I spoke to Mrs. Mello, the petitioner, over the last couple of weeks, she spoke to both traffic and engineering, and they explained that they would have to put meters and, and all of that, and they explained that, you know, right now, they own it, the, the different buildings around it, owners own it to the middle of the street, and at that point, why a city employee didn't take it upon themselves but instead directed a resident to go ahead and do a petition that should have been done by the city is, is absurd.
It's mind-boggling, quite honestly. And can we just find out, is this happening in other places? Why don't we just get a list of, let's put this together. We'll take care of it, no problem. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Councilon seat three, did you grab your hand up?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, I was approached on two different occasions over the last probably five to six years, by property owners there that wanted to initiate the petition to have the street accepted, but they never acted on it. I delivered, I hand-delivered them the 10-signature petition on two different occasions, one for a property owner on Granite Street itself, and then secondly, for the new owner of the building that's directly across the street from the old courthouse that's on the corner of Rock and Granite Street. So they have the opportunity, often over the last several years, to initiate the acceptance. I told them it was a simple process, 10 signatures from people who are voters, residents of Fall River, they didn't have to be residents of that street, they didn't have to be owners of buildings on that street. They chose not to, and I think partially, they chose not to because they liked the benefit of having a private, private street. So it was a surprise to me when it was asphalted. Mrs. Viveras has explained the reasons for it. Frankly, I don't think that you could have parking legally on either side of the street, because an accepted street means that trash trucks are going to need room to travel up and down that street. That is just a lane, it's not really even a street, and if it's parking even on one side of the street, trash trucks or ambulances or any oversized vehicle is not going to make it down that street. In fact, the, it's more of a driveway, because on Rock Street, the entrance to Granite Street on Rock is a sidewalk, it's a concrete sidewalk. Streets are usually asphalt to asphalt, so driveways, and that's another whole other issue, there is, we're out of, the city engineer needs to get on the stick, because there are many places now where driveways are being made, and they're not putting in concrete. Charlton Hospital, as an example, on Highland Avenue, they now have asphalt driveways from the street into their parking area. That's supposed to be a concrete sidewalk. If you remove a concrete sidewalk to have a driveway, you're supposed to put back a concrete sidewalk, and it's happening in many different places. The rear of Waring Ashton Funeral Home on High Street, again, it's asphalt to asphalt, no concrete sidewalk. So we've got ordinances that require that things be done correctly, and they're not being followed, and they're not being administered properly. And the city engineer, I brought this to the city engineer's attention, he's assured me that he's going to get it straightened out, and it's still not being straightened out. So this is, this is, this is an issue that's going to come back to us, because it's not a place where I think you can be putting parking meters. That encourages parking, I don't know if the street can handle parking. So I'm willing to support this, it's long overdue, it should have, this certainly is a case of the carriage going before the horse, it's backwards, but, you know, at least, let's get it done, let's get it straightened out. But this is going to be an issue that we're going to need to take a look at as it comes down the road, because this is a well-traveled little lane. A lot of people want to avoid the stoplight on Rock and Beaufort, so they take this little driveway to get over to Purchase Street, but it's going to need our further attention. So I'm happy that it's before us now, we need to have further discussion on this and other issues that relate to this, so I look forward to those discussions. I yield.
Anything further?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to refer to planning. Made by Council Joseph Kamara, seconded by Council Long, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have a claim?
Motion for a corporation counsel.
Motion made by Council Joseph Kamara.
Second.
Seconded by Council Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have a drain layer application on behalf of Haylen Development.
Motion to adopt made by Council Joseph Kamara, seconded by Council Long, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
An open meeting law complaint.
Motion for a corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel by Council Joseph Kamara, seconded by Council Long, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Communication from a city resident regarding the city charter.
Adopt, place on file. Second.
Would that be to refer to corporation counsel, Madam Clerk?
The will of the council, if they want, if they wish to do that, or if they want to just accept.
So did you say motion accepted, place on file?
Yes.
Motion accepted, place on file, made by Council Joseph Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Long, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item 22 is a communication from city residents regarding concerns over the construction of a proposed gas station.
Either, motion to...
Motion for regulations.
Second.
Motion to refer to regulations by Council Joseph Kamara, seconded by Council Kilby. Any discussion?
Senator Jones, we think, which is...
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have a number of BNO applications on behalf of the VFW.
Will be a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion approved by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Long, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Minutes of the planning board.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Long, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to take 25 through 28 together, made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Joseph Kamara, all in favor?
Aye.
Council President, if I may, item number 25, the special meeting of the city council, secretary did amend those minutes to include the actual roll call votes that were taken, so if those minutes could be approved as amended.
Motion to accept as amended.
Motion to approve as amended, made by Council Joseph Kamara, seconded by Council Long, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to take items 26 through 28 together?
Motion to take 26 through 28 together.
Made by Council Joseph Kamara, seconded by Council Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt 26 through 28.
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Joseph Kamara, seconded by Council Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Committee on Real Estate, at a meeting held on October 8th, '07, excuse me, October 7th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted, this is the land acquisition at 903 Pierce Street.
Motion to adopt, committee's report? Second.
Motion to adopt, committee's report, by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, discussion?
Where is this property exactly, 903, where is that?
903 Pierce.
Is that across from the school? No.
Is that in our packet, Madam Clerk?
It should be.
I could offer some information on this location. It's three house lots east of Steppson Street on Pierce.
Is that we live?
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
The Committee on Regulations, at a meeting held on October 7th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted as amended, with Councilor Lillaby LeBeau absent and not voting. This is an auto body shop license renewal for Jay-Z Express at 969 South Main Street.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Joseph Kamara.
Second.
Seconded by Council Kilby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Madam Clerk, could we go back to item 5A, which was the land acquisition?
Yes.
The motion was made and seconded, but the vote was not taken.
Motion to adopt, who made the vote, Madam Clerk?
Council Kilby, seconded by Council Pelletier.
All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
No, I'll do that, I'll file it later.
That's all we have, Madam President.